Good evening. It is now 7:01 on Thursday, February 20th. We'll call to order the regular monthly meeting for Northwoodby Park and Recreation District Board. Any first order of business or agenda changes? Any changes to the agenda?
Yes. I would like to add a short discussion on volunteering or volunteer opportunities for the Woodby Island Marathon.
New business. We have an addition by Commissioner Walton for volunteer opportunities. Woodby Island Marathon. All right? Any other additions, changes, or deletions?
There were a couple of things that came up in my briefing with the, with this, the, yeah, with these guys, yeah.
Staff report?
Yeah, these guys, yeah. But one of them had to do with, you know, we've never yet really defined the whole family thing, not that we need to go down that road tonight, but there does need to be some discussion on what constitutes an employee. We've got some people who are taking advantage of, as they should, their wonderful opportunities been presented to them if they're a worker to swim and to have their immediate families swim with them. But then it gets into what constitutes an employee. I mean, are you an employee if you just work in the summer?
So are we going to do that this month or next month?
Uh, we can do it next month. It's fine.
Okay, so we'll add that to next month's agenda?
Okay.
All right. Is there anything that needs to be added for this month's agenda?
Also a discussion maybe next month on the, what we're going to do about the fitness club, the former running club.
All right.
And I think that they brought up an interesting point on that, and real quick, it really was, you know, we're getting close to spring. We really need to make a decision if we're going to hire somebody or not because these kids are going to be playing soccer, baseball, they're going to be looking for opportunities and things to do, so.
Well, the fitness club and, I don't remember the policy number, but policy regarding employee benefits.
And there was one other thing we might want to add next month, and it had to do with the employee handbook, and it had to do with the marijuana laws and how that affects employees who are in safety sensitive type jobs. You know, whether, because I think it, the way it states it now, it talks about the illegal drugs, alcohol, and, well, marijuana will not be illegal necessarily, but how are we going to have to address that, so.
Employee handbook and?
Yeah.
And what?
Will we?
It doesn't allow people to smoke marijuana at work.
Okay.
Because it's still an altering.
Okay.
Yeah, so I did not even, don't have to get in a safety sensitive position, you just can't do it while you have it.
Okay, well, there you go then.
So we don't need to get?
Okay.
Okay, so no other changes are?
As long as we're talking about next month's agenda, though.
Sure.
You need to have our discussion on pool temperature.
And pool temperature, all right. So any agenda changes for this month besides the ones for next month? No? All right. Board issues. Any board issues? We've got the election office under new business, so we won't do that under board issues. All right? Excellent. Um, well, that was quick and easy. Public comments. Steve, would you do me a favor? I'm in the corner, I'm so sorry. Good hurdle. There is no public comment on January 20th, excuse me, February 20th, 2014, there is no public comment. So I just want to make sure we got that in here. Minute approval, this may take while. November 25th, 2013 special?
I want to make a note that we actually look like we, and I didn't get it back to you all, but I think we have already approved the number 25 minutes. I did revise them somewhat, though, to bold the motion, so we can approve the revised version of it and just to cover ourselves.
Okay, well, yeah.
But I believe we've already taken care of the 25 minutes back in, I think, on the December.
So we have revised minutes from November 25th. All right, so revised minutes from November 25th. Um, yes, sir. Make a movement to approve these. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All abstain.
Abstain, um, because he wasn't a board member at the time, Commissioner Walton abstains. However, it's approved unanimously. Minutes of December 19th, 2013, regular meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for December 19th, 2013, regular meeting.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. The special meeting for Friday, December 27th, 2013?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for December 27th, 2013, special meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Do we have any discussion? I think we need to clarify from the auditor's report, and this is where I think it's in the agenda to discuss, and guys, correct me if I'm wrong, we, the one thing we got dinged on by the auditor, was it for executive session or special meetings that we weren't putting enough notes in? Does anybody recall? And I'm having a brain fart right now, so I don't recall either.
I know. We did get dinged, if you will, because we were not including enough notes during executive session as to what the purpose of the executive session was.
It was executive session. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So that doesn't count towards the special meeting, so we're good. Thank you, Dave. Any further discussion on the Friday, December 27th, 2013, special meeting? All in favor of approving December 27th, 2015, special minute, meeting minutes?
Aye.
All right?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear you. Nope. Motion passes unanimously. On to the Friday, January 10th, 2014, special meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for January 10th, 2014, special meeting.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, your own minutes.
Second, your own minutes, all right. Thank you, Kirk. Discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes as they stand?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. On to the Thursday, January 16th, 2014, regular monthly meeting. Do I have a motion?
Also make a motion to approve the minutes for January 16th, 2014, regular meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Down under voucher review, and I don't think that this is something that needs to be changed in the minutes as much as maybe just clarified for the record, where it says, "Dave Walton requests information regarding the accumulation and use of awards points associated with district credit card use." How are we doing, are we doing anything with the points we are accumulating? The question I was actually trying to ask is, how does the district benefit from the accumulation of those points?
Was there an answer? I mean, I think we were looking into that. Did we?
No.
Anybody ever, we have any feedback from us?
That's not an answer necessarily at this point.
We haven't had a meeting to, just to address it specifically.
That's correct. Do you want to change it to benefit and therefore do you want to leave it as is? I think it's, it's fine to leave as is.
Okay.
It's plain to say, leave as is.
All right. Further discussion?
Are we on January 16th?
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay, on page 1, 2, 3, under the report on director research, there's the third paragraph down, for the purpose of, the question motion we made, set up the subcommittee for the purpose of.
Oh. Oh, wow, yeah.
As far as I'm concerned, for what we need in minutes, we could delete that whole sentence and perhaps a phrase might be helpful.
So we're going to?
Can you remember that part back?
So we're going to delete the sentence under new business, report on director set, search?
Yeah, just see McDougal requests a motion to set up, to set up the subcommittee for the purpose of, why? This is a dis.
You just want to delete that out?
Yeah, okay.
Further discussion? All in favor of approving the Thursday, January 16th, 2014, regular monthly meeting minutes with the deletion of the sentence under report on director's search as requested by Commissioner McDougal? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Passes unanimously. The special meeting for Monday, January 27th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for January 27th, 2014, special meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Discussion.
You know, I do want to say that I just took these off of the tape, and I, basically, the state auditors had a meeting with us, and we had the audit report for two years, 2011 and 12. There were only about, there were four of the commissioners and maybe three or four public members, I believe, two, two public members and two auditors. So they had the, the report itself, which was just boilerplate for the most part, then they had a management letter, and they also had an exit conference agenda, basically. And really what the auditors did was Spencer, who was the lead, covered the main report, and then Brian, who was the, basically, auditor in charge, covered the management letter and the exit conference items, and I think Spencer then wrapped it up at the end. So I just went from the tape, and they just basically followed those documents point by point, write down. One thing, the management letter did not include a couple of things from the exit conference document and vice versa, so I tried to include anything that was missing from either side, and it's just, as much as I could, I just pretty much took it from the documents themselves and, and from the order of the tape as people spoke about the items. So there's nothing in here that's in addition to what, you know, what was in those documents or what was spoken. However, I did leave a few things out from what was spoken, and if you, if you want to pick those things, items up, the conference was only about a half hour long.
Yeah, and then right here, there you took them.
So I didn't see that.
Thank you.
You can refer to that and get any areas you want to fill in blank with conversation from the public. I think there was one public comment and then a couple of questions from board members, so.
Any further discussion? Thanks, Kirk. Nope? All in favor, I'm sorry, I am doing, yes, January 27th, Monday, the special meeting minutes. Okay, fine. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes from the special meeting on Monday, January 27th, 2014?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Special meeting Friday, January 31st, 2014.
Lastly, I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 31st, 2014, special meeting.
Second. Only have a second.
I may have been absent delightedly, but I would prefer to put regrets since I told you I was going to be absent.
Yes.
Oh. Absent sounds like a willful felony of some sort.
Still, it happened again.
Change absent to?
To regrets.
Regrets.
And that was on, which one?
This is Friday, January 31st. Yes. Any other discussion? All in favor of change of, oop, I'm sorry?
The motion doesn't make sense.
Which one?
But the meeting, but the old motion.
Well, made a motion to table the discussion.
Made by C. Walton to table the discussion until the next regular meeting to allow further information can be obtained unless the need for immediate action. I think there's something missing in there or something got in there twice.
That has to do with the energy?
HVAC system.
The energy system for the HVAC system, the interface with the computer, correct?
Yes, that's.
I hope that can be obtained on the HVAC system.
Yeah, do you want to include something there to?
To table the discussion?
It's continuation of this specific line item.
Yes.
But it probably wouldn't hurt to have in the, in the motion, what the, what the motion is about.
Okay, well, if we could just take that can be obtained and that would make sense sort of. Made by C. Walton to table the discussion until the next regular meeting to allow further information unless the need for immediate action.
Okay, I'll do that, yeah.
Did lead can be obtained?
Yeah, just take that out.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of passing the minutes for the special meeting Friday, January 31st, 2014, with the changes suggested by Commissioner McDougal? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Well done, Kirk. Yeah, if you get those.
All right. I don't know how much he's got back. Wow. All right.
I don't want to be out of order, Sean. I forgot a couple of things that we probably really need to address tonight, and it's real quick. You tell me when you want it. It had to do with Babe Ruth, but I forgot all about that. They need a signature, so how would we go around?
Oh, that's the letter of agreement?
Yeah, the letter of agreement. And, and then there was one other thing, had to do with customer survey for the auditor. The auditor wanted us to do a customer survey, and they had sent it to Bill Walker, but since he's the director, who will do that. So we can do this anytime we want tonight, but I forgot about both of those, and Nicole actually had the paper for whoever.
So you're going to make a motion and move those to new business, the?
Okay, I would like to make a motion to discuss in new business, the letter of agreement between the Northwoodby Park and Rec. District and the Babe Ruth Baseball.
Okay.
And also a motion to decide who, if anyone, fills out the customer survey with the audit, I mean, tell me audit.
So you're making a motion to include the customer survey for the audit and the letter of agreement for the Babe Ruth League to new business?
Yes, please.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll add those to new business.
Thank you, Kirk. Sorry, I'm, I'm, don't do it again.
Don't do it again.
All right.
Voucher review. We will now review the vouchers. Actually, I was going to say, before we start to review the vouchers, I'm actually going to need a motion and a second before we start discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve voucher numbers 6121 through 6154. For the amount, for the amount of $43,090.75 in payroll transfer from the maintenance and operations account to the payroll account of $34,891.43.
I have a motion to approve vouchers from 6121 to 6154 for $43,090.75 in payroll transfers from the management and operations account to the payroll account of $34,891.43. Do I have a second? Discussion.
So the, and that's our bill for the 2011 and 12 audits, the $11,086.89. And 89 cents for, in total?
Yeah, there's a personal for January, or billed in February for January. I received one of those.
Okay. That's going to be a lot, or is it more than you thought it'd be?
Yeah, it's almost about.
Okay. Well, I don't know what that would cost.
I have a question in regards, looking at the voucher report. There's a lot of vendors listed on here, which makes sense, but then there's several spots where the name is Northwoodby Park and Rec. And they seem to coincide with swim team expenses. Is, do we normally, how do?
That's our petty cash account.
Okay.
So we have a checking account for petty cash, so we have a check, checkbook for. So checks are written off that account, which that is, our auditor signed on that account. And swim team fees or the meat fees need to go out earlier than we can get a check from the county, so that's why they're written off that petty cash account, and then I write a voucher to reimburse that account, and that's why it's.
Is there a way to indicate on there, perhaps in addition, that, you know, Northwoodby Park and Recreation District is essentially reimbursing itself early, what, who, who the vendor actually is, whether it's Pacific Northwest Swimming or USA Swimming or?
I could put that in, I don't know why. Well, I mean, like this one says Washington Open, so it's reimbursing, reimbursing the revenue. But the way that the county has it set up, this bill with the voucher numbers, is the, they have their, their number, which is the 500 and numbers, and then it, that's where the checks are made out, since our petty cash account is Northwoodby Park and Rec., it has to be made out to Northwoodby Park and Rec. in order for us to.
Okay.
Can I follow up on that?
Please.
One of the problems that we have when we're trying to review this material is what Dave's brought up. These are expenses, but where do I find the revenues? Where do I find the revenues that compensate us for like the 975 or the 398? You just told us how it happens, if you get a check back from the county, you're going to, but on the paperwork, where do I find that?
Oh, we kind of look into?
Well, it comes back here to, to the district, I understand that. But the question is now, okay, so I'm looking at this, and I'm looking at these as expenditures, but in fact, those get revenue coming in, and I have nothing here that tells me that we get revenue in for those.
I can always get the statements and reconciliations for the petty cash accounts.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's a way, there's, there are other things that happen like this, too. We've, we've had it with concessions, you know, and that type of thing where revenue comes in for expenditures, but we never see the revenues coming in on the papers. It's not a question.
Budget, petty cash, this time.
Has a block for the month.
No, that's, yeah, that helps.
But I'm wondering how much more work it would be if you did actually get the money in, if you, if you had a little thing down here, sort of revenue that compensates for, or if that would just make your life more miserable.
Is that like the report that we need to fill out for the month, how much money comes in, which, I can get it from her.
Would it be a big job, or would, it would certainly make it a lot, be a lot more understandable because then we wouldn't worry about the 398 and so on to get paid out if they didn't. Okay, so let's go. Does that make sense? Is that possible?
Any other questions? I've got one. And you'll have to, excuse me, as I don't have the answer to my own question here. $6,074.59 for our natural gas. We knew it was going up that, we knew it was going to go up this year, we had talked about this when we were doing budget. We're going to spend close to $72,000 just on heating the pool alone. If it maintains that, granted, we're not going to spend that much in the summer, let's hope. Knock on plastic. But that's extremely high. Were the extenuating circumstances bad, or is that just pretty much normal?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. We knew they were going up, and we knew it was going to be a significant hit, and they weren't kidding.
That includes all spaces and the pool, boilers and crossboard. You got this tran, oh, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
Transfer HIYI scholarship, looks like, was that previously ours? I remember hearing something about it.
Yes, we used to be the custodian for the HIYI scholarship funds. That account's been pretty much at a zero balance since I've been here. Until recently, there were some donations made, but then the Southwoodby Park took over that custodianship, so we just transferred that money out of our bank to that.
So that was like?
That's what that is. That was the balance of that account, yeah, so our, 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 our show's zero now for the scholarship.
So that's money actually going out, but that's not going to impact our budget?
No, no, that came out of the line.
And I remember seeing an email about that, the transfer.
I know we're nickel and dime in here, but what did we get embroidered?
Huh?
What did we get embroidered?
Well, that was NWA apparel, and how that gets there going is, so we pay Babe Ruth embroidery to do the apparel, and I bill out in the NWA accounts, in their personal accounts, and then they reimburse on that line, and it gets to the other. Does that make sense?
We were told to do it that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Because I know it used to be like we would find like, you know, make yourself somebody to pay them, and now it's done through the NWA monthly fee, correct? Like when you pay, you also, if you ordered clothing, you paid at the same time, is that right? Is it the whole day?
Right, yeah, they'll pay at the front counter, and then I go supply, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's the same way with the U.S. government.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. My other thing was the tracers, who do we get background checks on?
Employees, new hires, anybody who are major.
This 3150, is that the cost of one background check? Is that multiple?
It's a standard $25 flat rate with tracers, and if they find anything, they charge you per, and then they find 50 cents per, yeah, it's like 50 cents per item.
Okay.
And they're very thorough, one for apparel and the.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's, that's a lot to find.
And after we came across, we, we, we're working, we have tracers.
Further questions on the vouchers? All in favor of approving vouchers 6121 through 6154 for the total of $43,090.75 in payroll transfer from M&amp;O account to payroll account of $34,891.43? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Do you need a motion to ask that next month we see the revenue that offsets some of these, or do you just take that on advisement? Give us a new paragraph?
We can take that on advisement. We can take that on advisement.
You got to be enough.
Now, people don't usually like to see red. We'll start with, the maintenance report is quite lengthy, just because I believe we're attaching the, yeah, all the extra stuff to it. So why don't we start with the NWA report first?
The Masters were never part of NWA. Just for accounting areas, they're the Northwoodby Masters, and there was such a group for, well, we've always been told it was part of it.
Big pardon?
We've always been told it was part of it. That's funny. First time I've ever heard that, honestly. That's, I mean, I believe it. First time I've ever heard it. Everything, yeah. It's just a different set of numbers. That's how come you'll see if you wanna see confirmation from the archives in here, that the Masters attendance is seen as different from the NWA. They might never put together, they're just different organizations. I keep getting NWA things out for the last two years, but they're no relevant whatsoever. You know, because it's, you guys ever hear that?
We used to do it that way. We had the NWA coaches, NWA and Northwoodby Masters coaches' report, yeah. So...
So it's always been the same coach, so is that right?
Yeah, there was just recognition in the past that there were two different clubs. So...
You did break it out, though.
Yeah. Coach, anything you wanna talk about here?
Just probably like to draw your attention to the follow-up by the last meeting, that was the assignment of travel budget dollars to professional development. On page three of my report, the early part of that goes through sort of the background and the philosophy of the idea. I've got a link on to the ASCA membership website, and I've got a rundown of essentially all the different education requirements for the ASCA levels. And at the bottom of that, identified the proposed cost, proposed for the year for 2014, down to about three hundred and seventy-five dollars. At the next page, on page four, I've given a brief, what I feel is a kind of reasonable justification of this, looking at revenue incoming versus labor expenses at this point through February fifteen, as being effectively a wash and considerably under our travel budget at this point, even accounting for January expenses not yet submitted, and certain factor of, you know, travel that tends to pick up a little bit during long course seasons. So I guess the proposal is for the same three hundred and seventy-five dollars to establish a professional level of education for our coaches.
How come with twenty-two hundred bucks under, that we saved up for the two months?
It's good.
What's the base for saving two hundred and twenty, two hundred, sorry, two thousand and two hundred bucks on budget? How come was the road back?
What I'm saying at this point, based on our budget versus actual at this point, the labor for coaches is twenty-two hundred dollars less than the budget.
Is that because we don't have all the coaches, or what's...
We're running, we're running.
We have one less coach than we had a year ago.
I'm sorry.
We have one less coach than we did a year ago, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so there's one less person.
Correct. And so offsetting that, you know, we have revenue that isn't, that is short of budget, but you know, effectively, we're going to just line primary line out, it's just a line.
Does the, the coaches' question to divert these funds from the travel budget, does that require a motion before we discuss it? Or are we open for discussion now?
We have to have a motion, then you discuss whatever you want.
Right, yeah.
Then I would like to make a motion right now that we approve what Coach Patterson has requested, and that is to provide training for the head coach, levels one, two, and three, and the assistant coach, two assistant coaches for the level one train, which totaled three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that would be, that would come out of the travel on the budget.
So we have a motion, and we have a second?
Second.
All right, so now we can discuss things, okay.
Does that, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead. Coach, if we divert three hundred and seventy-five dollars from the travel budget, does that, in your opinion, leave us enough in that budget to accommodate the need for travel between now and the end of the year?
Yes, yes, I agree with this. Personally, I think the travel budget is a little high, you know, and we've been very favorable with our tax of our plan to continue to use it.
Well, we can appreciate the frugality, as we're all dealing with public's money here. Does these, does this training require travel to and from?
Good question. No, those, the training is done through mail or electronic medium, testing through the ASCA organization or something else. I would expect that in 2015, we might be looking at possibility of a local or regional conference. I tend to be very, very conservative when it comes to those kinds of things, because there's so much good information available online at the beginning, so, but that would be the only thing we'll be ahead that I foresee with travel.
And if we pay for certifications to the head coach and the assistant coaches, are we then obligated to continue to pay for recertifications in...
That's a fair, that's a good question, yes. Each year, they will fee seventy dollars, and I'll have to look into see how long the certifications of the different levels are good for, that may be continuing the educational requirements over a certain period of time.
I for one am a proponent of professional development. I believe it not only increases a person's, increases a person's ability to function in the capacity at which they've been hired to do, but it trickles down to what people got there charged with training in this case.
I'd like to interrupt just briefly, Commissioner. In our recent coaches' meeting, we discussed this, and there was definitely, it comes up, one or two coaches that spoke about the interest in facilities, so, very interesting.
So, Coach, what's your current qualification in this? Are you qualified in any of these levels now?
I'm an ASCA member.
What?
I would say that at level three, once completed testing, and that's why I identify levels one, two, and three, I should be at level three by the end of the year.
So level three would require, you need a junior national qualifier, national...
National qualifier, top ten, A group top ten, strong, that's worthy qualification.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. From somebody who's an ASCA level two, I have asked ASCA level two, I found it invaluable training. When I took ASCA level one and then followed up a year later with ASCA level two, I learned an incredible map, which I felt helped when I was coaching. Unbelievable map. And so, I mean, if you're wondering whether this is a good training for them or not, I can tell you from my own personal experience and having been a coach for eight years, it is. Maybe each different...
Now, this is something you can pay for yourself, though, right? I mean, there's nothing, we're not holding you back from, the district doesn't have to pay for it. My question is, I mean, I got maybe a bit of a bone to pick. We're at the Dollynham meet, and Colleen Branigan was there all day Saturday, which is for her, paying her, she's an hourly employee, and I did question why she was there, and I suppose you have a good reason for not being there, but...
Point of order. We're discussing...
Well, no, I'm just trying to...
Not discussing whether you're swimming on a Saturday or Sunday.
No, I'm leading to something.
I hope so. Please.
My problem with it is, do I, I don't really know that I feel you're vested here. And we're taking on the out of a travel budget, we really haven't looked at long-term, I guess you're going to Oregon for a meet or two, so that's, that's a pretty significant travel item. Two weekends in a row currently, that's on the schedule, aggression. So, I mean, are we paying, no, are we paying travel costs there? How are these things gonna add up? And, you know, those are, those are my valid concerns, I feel, that I haven't really got a good chance to look at this travel budget. I know last year, we budgeted way under it, and I know this year, we are coming into, leaving thirteen ninety thousand dollars in the hole, that we have to make up some money for. And so now we're gonna be paying out money to these various programs that sound pretty good, but, you know, we're also paying a pretty good salary. And, you know, sometimes, if I wanna get a CPA certificate, I've gotta go pay for it myself. My employer's not gonna pay for it, and it's pricey. So, there you go.
Mr. Show, ASCA memberships have been paid for by the district.
Okay, and I, to follow on with what Kurt said, I, somebody who just recently did his tax on my own taxes, I paid for my International Association Fire Chief comes out of my pocket every year. Many people pray for the professional membership side of their own pockets, so I definitely see Kurt's point. I do see the validity to paying the membership by the district for the program. I know one of the things that a lot of places do is they also require, if we pay for schooling of some sort, and we discussed this when we talked to Eric about the aerobics instructor, that the employee doesn't leave for a certain amount of time, or the employee then reimburses the district. And we can definitely add that on to a motion if we want to, but I think those are valid concerns, you know.
I don't question that they're valid concerns. My question is to bring up why he wasn't on a swim meet on a Saturday. That's what I have a problem with.
I think the point there, Steve, was he was questioning dedication.
Whether he's vested or not. He's here at Chicks' Whistler, and I see him, and I would question whether other people are vested with this one. I mean, I see Bill as a person that's dedicated, very vested, you know. I don't really sure what happened with the training, that he was at a swim meet on a Saturday, so...
Well, it's budget, it's budget, I think, certainly, and maybe, you know...
Sean's gonna ask, I have a question.
Yes.
I'm just looking down the numbers here. There's annual membership of seventy dollars, is that personal? And is there a category where like we could have one membership from the district, and then you did the courses that way, or...
Good question. They're individual.
They are just individual memberships, are they?
You know, I, again, I'm a believer of professional development, I think that it has stated during the special meeting on the, whenever it was that, that we discussed aerobics, it benefits, benefits the district, you know. To touch on something, you know, I've seen Coach Bill here when he has as few as one swimmer, and having traveled off-island to get here for that one swimmer. You know, so I don't think that by paying for professional development for these coaches, we are putting the district out there for any kind of loss, especially since this is, we're diverting money that has been pre-budgeted for the benefit of the team, and redirecting that for the benefit of the team. It might be reasonable for the district to reimburse versus pay upfront for successful completion. When I go and take certification tests for International Code Council, I pay for those upfront, and upon successful completion, then I submit and get reimbursed. That might be a way to go, which would perhaps ease some, some commissioners' fears that the coaches won't take it seriously, or that they're not vested.
Ellen?
Yeah, I think that this is three hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is already covered in the sense that we have a one employee coaching. And so I think for the time, I think it's worth paying the three seventy-five dollars. I'm in favor of it, because then we're saying, we're saying that we're supporting the coaching staff, that we want, if we can't get coaches here at the top level, we wanna get our coaches to as high a level as possible, and we push it that way. However, we do have a performance evaluation that comes up, you know, and so if these other problems happen, the performance evaluation time is the time to talk about that. So I would keep them separate, and say three hundred and ninety-five bucks is a huge amount of money, given the other problems that we've got.
Three hundred and seventy-five?
Yeah, whatever, the number, three seventy-five, yes.
Further discussion? Further discussion? Erica?
Just to kind of give you a history, when I took ASCA level one, the district paid for my fee, my seventy-dollar fee, and then for my test funds at those locations. However, to, after that initial seventy dollars, it was up to me to maintain that the following year. So they paid for the first one, and then when I received ASCA level two, the district paid for the forty-five dollars for ASCA level two, as long as I had maintained my ASCA certificate, my ASCA membership at the seventy dollars. So they paid for the first one, I had to pay for the second year, and then they paid for my ASCA two.
Okay.
Because that showed that I was invested enough to continue my membership to go to that next level.
Thank you.
Yeah. Give you a history. That was here.
So I, I would be more for that kind of program, which it shows a continued seriousness on part of the member that is part of that membership, and that is not expecting us to keep it, you know, fully funded for a little bit of your own skin in the game, too, essentially.
Well, we're, we're talking about paying three hundred and seventy-five dollars now for something that is going to be renewable next year, and I think that we can discuss options on paying that come budget time, when we have to account for the, for whatever those costs are gonna be at that time.
So this is initial, and then you're thinking down the road?
Down the road, you need to, so, do.
So, Steve, is your motion for an initial payment?
Yes. The motion is out there is to approve three hundred and seventy-five, as requested. Further discussion? All in favor of approving the proposal for the ASCA membership and training as per the coach for three hundred and seventy-five dollars?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you, Coach. Any further questions for Coach Bill?
I do, but I don't know if it's necessarily a question for Coach Bill or a question for Coach Bill and Erica. If we, I had a citizen, a patron, looking at the, looking at the calendar that they saw online, you know, when the pool is available for open swim, when it is available for lap swims, when it was completely blocked out by NWA and Masters and other programs. And was asking whether or not it was possible to open a lane during NWA times for those people that can't make it at other times. And looking at, just looking at January and knowing that attendance in NWA has been down consistently for quite a few months and believing, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but believing that the numbers that you hear are actual entrances through the door, so one person coming five days a week is going to be five, five marks. We had six hundred and fifty-three people at ten in January two thousand and four as far as NWA was concerned, not taking into account Masters, which is, there were twenty-seven swim days, didn't deduct anything for meets, I'm just assuming twenty-seven swim days, knowing that the swimmers aren't swimming on Sundays, which if the, if they're using the entire six lanes of the pool, that's, that's four people per lane. Is it possible to have one of those lanes available for the public?
Is it possible? Yes. Is it cost-effective? No. I have to put two lifeguards on there, you know, nine, minimum wage just jacked up, so, you know, even if I, people that would be available during that time would be my higher-paid lifeguard, so I'm looking at ten to eleven dollars a week. The Health Department does dictate that we have two lifeguards on any time that we have the sauna, the hot tub, the baby pool, which any time that we have lap lanes, you know, we'll be opening those. So, I would have to put at least one, if not two lifeguards on duty at that time for one, two, maybe three lap swimmers at most.
Because the coaches only count for lifeguards towards our club.
They count for their team.
Correct.
And if I only have one or two people who would like to come in and lap swim during that time, that's not going to pay for laps. And, you know, we're doing our best to cut costs right now and while I would love to have that availability, right now, unless I have twenty-five, thirty people that want to come and do that and I have all those lanes available, which we don't have the lanes for these twenty-one, thirty people, it's not, in my opinion, not cost-effective.
I play basketball with my son at Grand Central yesterday. Those are children who work, you guys.
Thank you, Erica. See, if you provide me with the answer, I can take back to that citizen. There we go. We're happy with that. Further questions for Coach Bill or for Erica on the aquatics program?
Eric Olkens, an interesting, interesting question. I've never, never really seen the pool that way. How long were, you have scheduling, a sheet of schedules, like how many lifeguards are on at different times? I would love to see one of those, maybe immediately so we could chat because then we could take a look at what your challenges are because I, I never thought of it as, yeah, I have two lifeguards, no lifeguards if there's a swim team because the coach is a lifeguard person. Just to try and see, because then we might be able to try and find ways that if there are public concerns, we could address them, but your answer is perfectly right for right now. It'd just be really interesting to see that data so we could figure out how to work through it.
And the other thing that, you know, to take into consideration, I'm really happy to let you see how I schedule.
Oh, I'm not.
And how the schedule and how the scheduling works. The only time that we, that we really have just one lifeguard in the morning is the early morning times, very low, and then we do have a coach here part of the time, so we don't really need to run a second one. But as the coach is working his way off at eight o'clock, I have another one coming in.
So, I'm sure that your chair, your sheet shows that.
Oh, yeah.
It would just be an education.
Otherwise, they wouldn't know when to show up for work.
Yeah, that I understand.
Yeah, I'd show you any time, but yeah, it's, we have to do it in a way that's, that's cost-effective and that's within the Health Department's requests that they've made of us as far as keeping that facility.
Absolutely.
Thoroughly.
I am happy to see that rentals went up compared to last year. That's promising because we increased the amount that we charged the rentals and yet we still had more people that used the pool, so that's encouraging. Do you like that?
Looking at this material, Sean.
Yes.
I'm wondering if, since there isn't a director right now, if we couldn't move that the, some committee of staff or whatever, hire a person to do that, to explore, start setting up that, what we put on the agenda for next month? The, the running club for kids in the summertime? Because by next month, we're going to be getting into March and you're pretty close to spring and if we just said, okay, if we gave authority, maybe one commissioner and a couple of you guys to be the hiring committee for an hourly employee or however you want, you think it's appropriate to do it, we could just get that off our plate because I think it's a relative no-brainer.
So, you making a motion?
Well, I'm asking if I can make a motion.
Please.
I move that a committee, a committee be set up to hire an hourly employee to run, whatever you want to call it, the running club.
Yeah, it's, it would be the fitness club and, and kids, and the Kids Rock Fitness. We have a Kids Rock Fitness, the album's willing to work with the two and three-year-olds, teach runner, those. That person though would be under Bill's direction as they would be a coach.
May I say one thing? Because one of the things you guys were discussing was that the possibility of this thing evolving to where we weren't just looking at a fitness club for young kids, but I think that Coach Bill has expressed a desire, if I'm correct here, to expand that to, to adults as well, maybe even developing it into a way to reach out to triathletes who, where you could work with them, right?
We've had them coming in and asking about it, that's the thing. We've had a lot of the baby guys even come in and ask us if we have anybody who's going to help us train for triathletes or who's going to help us do running and swimming and working with the Masters team and maybe to get their swims.
So, my question for us would be this, you know, because I think Sean had, you had made a comment.
I'm going to stop you.
Okay.
And I'm going to say, I need a motion and I need a second and then we can discuss. We're doing a lot of, we're putting the cart before the horse here.
I second it.
We don't have, we don't have the motion finished, so let's finish the motion, please. Thank you very much. Ellen, you're going to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we establish a committee to hire an hourly employee to reactivate the fitness, Kids Rock Fitness Club and whatever it may evolve into during the summer.
I have a motion to have a subcommittee to hire an hourly employee for the fitness club. Second. Discussion.
Steve, the one thing that we had discussed was, and I think that you had mentioned to me once in passing, that maybe we should wait on the new director to allow his vision to also play in here, to where, you know, he doesn't just inherit this, you know, it's a, he has a voice, he or she, excuse me, please with that, I didn't, yeah, he or she has a voice in this, this going forward. If we choose to do that, do we, do we go with an employee that currently works here? What, what's her name that she was doing it before? Yeah.
Chelsea.
So, do we go with Chelsea and, and just continue with the fitness club the way it is for right now, with that thought of it evolving later? Anyway, that's, it seems to me that's a job of the subcommittee.
Okay.
So, the subcommittee would be charged not only with, with interviewing and.
Hiring a person.
Hiring a person, but also exploring the vision as to what the, the fitness club is?
And we'd expect it to report back to us with the vision, so that we know exactly.
Okay, I like that idea.
My question would be, how's our time right now? How's our subcommittees? Is what we, the.
It would only be one of us and a couple of people that are there because it's hourly, it's a hourly appointment, not a long-term, not a full-time contract.
So, then are we, at the same time, we need a motion to authorize, to advertise for?
This person is just a vision gathering.
Authorized.
It's an hourly, we don't advertise for, we don't have to have a motion to advertise for a lifeguard. And this is a similar type of.
Okay, and hold on, we, we don't, yeah, I'm trying to keep it straight and one of the things we need to remember is the board doesn't do any hiring besides the director. That's it. According to our bylaws, the only person we hire is the director, while the member of the board can act as an advisory role in the subcommittee. That member of the board, thank you, the member of the board cannot be part of the hiring because the only person we hire is the director.
If it's a committee that's doing it and if there's a majority, that's the people that normally do it, then you compensate it for the director's absence because there's nobody in that position.
So, what use?
So, that, that person can be involved in the hiring, it's just fine. It's not, it's not a majority of commissioners.
Let me ask you a question. Couldn't we just, you know, go with the young lady that's been doing it already and just kind of pick that thing back up and run with it like?
That would be up to the subcommittee.
That's up to the committee.
Yes. Further, further discussion? Erica?
The reason Chelsea can't continue to do it, I mean, right now, she's not doing it at all because of her school schedule. She can take over again in spring, but when I have talked to her about developing these hired athletes, she is not at the back level. She would be willing to help out with somebody who could. However, as far as searching goes, because it is an hourly employee, I thought maybe we'd notify our commission liaison and just let them know, we're moving forward with it. The absence of a director, or not moving forward, forward with it as well.
Good. Thank you. Further comments?
Still move the subcommittee.
All right, so we have a motion for the subcommittee to approve the.
The subcommittee.
It's a job to.
Again, what are they doing?
Okay, hold on.
They're just, they're just hiring an hourly employee, but there's no director to write the shit, so you've got, have to have some other entity to do it. And this would be the other entity, straightforward. No, I don't think so. He's upset about it, you know?
Upset.
Yeah.
Can you see what I mean?
No. I think he's just, I think he's just concerned with.
You know what? Let me put, let me put this out there. I'm serious about this whole thing, so don't, don't, don't take the seriousness because I'm this happy face of life and I can do both. I am not upset, trust me on that.
Okay.
Am I very serious about what's going on there? Yes. You know why? Because I want to see this thing work. You know, I want to work so bad. I feel that we're dysfunctional, we're kicking the can down the street just a little bit more.
Okay.
And one more thing, so.
So, you're looking for a volunteer, a commissioner?
We haven't, we haven't passed the motion yet, so let's get the motion passed first. Just for kicking the can. Any further discussion? So, all in favor of having a subcommittee to hire an hourly employee to start the fitness club and the Kids Rock Fitness Club? Is that correct?
Or as it transforms with these ideas, but to get it done this month.
To get it done by this, to get it done in the next month prior to the next monthly meeting. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now, the good thing is we can do this one of two ways. Either I can throw somebody under the bus or we can have a volunteer from the subcommittee, so.
I'd be happy to work with staff on.
There we go.
Finding somebody to, hiring a, to, to advise them in hiring a hourly employee to operate the Fitness Club and the Kids Rock Fitness Club.
So, we have Commissioner Walton volunteering and we will have him work with the head coach and Erica. That'll be the subcommittee. Thank you very much. All right. The, moving on to the facilities report, any questions about facilities maintenance?
Are you going to give us the PowerPoint or is, was PowerPoint.
We're looking at, wait, wait, we're looking at facilities and maintenance. Hello, everybody. We had a lot going on this month. We're on page six of the staff reports. We're talking about fixing toilets and showers and rebuilding a spider valve for the spa. So, any questions on page six of the staff reports, facilities and maintenance?
Yes, how many, how many showers are still not operational in the women's locker room? I ask because I've been hit up by them and several people as far as I know.
And every once in a while, they do work, just not constantly and the parts are on order for.
Okay, so we are in the process of getting those fixed.
Yeah.
All right. And the changing rooms are all operational in the women's? I've never been in the women's, so I don't know. Men don't have changing rooms.
They're all operational.
During the last week or two, I can't remember the timing, there was a question that you had to manually run down there because the computer system doesn't work on the boiler.
Yeah, and it's not the boiler. It's the, it's the heating HVAC system.
And one of our eminent clients was totally stressed that there should be an alarm down there so that we would be able to respond quickly. And he thought a baby monitor or something or other might be the way to do it so we could hear the alarm up here where people are working. As a question of liability for the district. And has anything happened in that sense?
No, no, no. Because I, I've taken the, the electronic part, it's pretty much out of it. The only things that are running right now that are part of the electric is the phase converters to tell the motors what speed they're supposed to run. Everything else is taken out and it's been turned into a main.
So, there's no, yeah, but there's no, so there's no threat if the alarm goes off and nobody hears it, there's no threat to the people using the pool?
No, because if the alarm goes off, all it does is shut down the main pumps.
Oh, but just shut it down.
It does shut it down if there's any problems whatsoever. Do I need to run Walmart still?
It doesn't sound like it. And I don't have to listen to twenty minutes.
Along that same line, do we still have a CO alarm down on that end of the building?
Has a what?
A CO alarm?
Yes.
Because we installed the CO alarm as a precautionary.
There is still one out there and there's still a backup.
Patch it a little.
Our heat exchangers are good these days. They're, they are, so that's good.
Any, the heat exchangers are used primarily for the.
Water temp?
No, the heat exchangers are for the boost off seat.
Oh.
For the actual on-deck temperature, not water temperature.
Okay.
The boiler controls the water temperature.
So, the AC you're, we're talking about now is for.
HVAC is for the outside, for the deck air.
Deck temps.
Yeah. Two completely different systems.
I wanted to come in some day, could you show me all of this?
I think we need a tour.
Yeah. I'd be more interested.
I've had the tour.
Do it in my bed. That would be shorter.
Would you like to, yeah.
Like that?
If you have time after work, we can go on.
Kind of nice to see. Easy relax.
Don't know how late our meeting goes, I guess, too.
All right. Matt, you've got a letter here with an update on the HVAC system, that's the next page. Has to do with the bearings, they found the bearings are good and that the idler pulley, pardon me, I'm sorry, pulley system and belts are the problem?
Yes. They, they went in, bearings, our bearing, went in and started looking at the system, started pulling off things and protecting them and right now our shaft and bearings are good in the main fan, which is a plus. And they found that the main noise was the, was the self-adjusting hydro pulley and what it does is it keeps the belts tension from the motor to the fan, fan pulley. And as the belts run on the, on pulleys, it's bouncing back and forth and the pulley system has, has pretty much expired. It's what's making all the noise and what is pretty much messed up.
It's like a belt squeaky in a car.
Except the belts jumping back and forth about three inches.
Get a little bit more severe than a belt squeaky at the top.
A little bit more than the squeaky belt.
Yes, all right. But you did expect the cost to be significantly cheaper than replacing the bearings?
They told me that the cost will be hundreds.
That's great, that's good news. Will we be spending that hundreds on the main pump that has started to leak from the top, however?
Well, hopefully, I think the, you know, the prices of parts, see how available they are, I think the prices on those parts, and I hope, you know, I'm not sure at this point. I know last year, the main top, the, well, yeah, the main top seal assembly was just a thousand dollars, nine hundred and something dollars. It went bad, and of course, started leaking pressure and water. Now, unfortunately, with the bearing that's in the head of the pump has gone bad, and now it's pretty much watered out, that seal that's in there.
Okay. I'd asked the question, how long do these seals last, thinking that must be a new seal, but it wasn't, correct? It was.
No, it was aged.
It was out, outside since 2005, four, four. And I guess they were discussing that nobody had, I guess, applied like a grease or whatever.
Well, it wasn't preserved correctly, it was just set.
Just dry rubber sitting outside.
Exactly, well, it's not outside, it was sitting in the back shed, but.
It's outside, yeah.
Exactly.
They had shemized that that's probably what happened.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Continue on getting those fixed and update us next month, unless there's a major objection from the board?
I don't know, major objection, I'm just sort of, happening the last year, do we have, where do we have to get bids? We have to get three bids for things, is there a?
It is over twice, and it is above.
Ten thousand dollars or something?
Yeah, it's pretty high.
Right, and so we don't have to worry about that with this, we can just go ahead and get them on.
But I am personally getting several bids, so I can go and, you know, save the taxpayer and save us.
Thank you. And save your documents, too.
Thank you.
And we've already approved the fixing, the amount for the HVAC work, when we thought that the bearings were going to be shot.
Yes.
And so as long as this comes in under this, please use jurisprudence in making a good decision there.
Another thing is, you know, bearings are doing good work for us, I personally would pay a little more, you know, they're doing a good job, rather than, you know, or taking them off, you know, they don't want to work for us anymore, so.
You know, they very well could have come in here and just changed bearings, and I'm like, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
You know, oh, by the way, we've got this going, we want to change this.
We provided them a lot of work in the past year or two, I think, so, maybe they like us, you know, we'll keep them on.
Thank you.
Trying to be funny.
I don't.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to the PowerPoint, I guess, now, the Energy Savings Performance Contract, put together by the coach and Matt. Before we go on with this, I want to do something real quick. As a matter of order, I'm going to reach out to Carolyn and say, are you going to, are you sticking around solely for the report on the director's search, or are you going to stay for the whole meeting? Because I didn't want to.
I'm going to stick girl at home, so we're going to head out about 8:30.
Okay, I was going to ask, did you want, do you want us to do the director's search report real quick?
Thank you, I'd love to know.
Okay. And can I get a motion to change order?
Change order of business to allow Carolyn to discuss the director's search with us?
So we're going to, motion made to do the director's search out of order right now?
Yes.
Right? I have a second, all in favor?
All right.
All right. Let's talk about the director's search. So we've gone ahead and sent the, what I know so far is we finished the job description to a point, we've put the announcement out, we've gotten back, how many applications?
Just twelve.
Just twelve. So we had a stampede of applications. It's, it's, we left it open, and I think until this Friday, because it went out later?
Still, actually, I received one this morning.
Received one this morning?
Yeah, it's still open, it's still open.
It's still open, it's still out there, so we know it will be open until this Friday for the initial review, which will be done by Steve and Alan, is that correct?
I thought there were three that were put.
It's supposed to be Alan, myself, and Coach Bill, and Erica.
Okay, thank you for clarifying it, thank you, Steve. So Alan, Steve.
What we have to do is, how many, how much we're going to cut that 12 to 13 down to, and we've never discussed that.
Well, with 12 to 13, I would say the four of you, since you're reviewing all of them, make a number that you guys feel, without looking at them, I would say it would be unfair for us to say only three.
Okay.
Only four, unless there's disagreement.
I don't think it would be hard to find four, that are good, and get rid of the others, because some of them are the normal stuff that you get, which you don't have to spend a lot of time.
I would agree that, you know, five or six of those, four, five, six, are right in there, that's about, that's about right.
Alan, you said there's some possibilities?
Three. Three, there's obviously one that somebody might know, who's better than a spy, I don't know.
So we've got a solid start, we're well on our way, so.
So should we set a time where we get together, the four of us? I think that's what we are, to discuss this.
But they, this is Thursday, and they will most tomorrow.
I'll be free whenever you need me.
No, but it closes tomorrow, which means you can't do it till Monday. Monday's fine for me.
I'm here Saturday.
What, well, you better wait for the mail, if they mail it in.
I got you, there we go.
Okay, well, that's a good point, good point. Stop this agreement, everything, just, Monday's fine, me, Tuesday's fine.
Tuesdays.
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 Tuesdays?
Tuesday works for me.
What's this? Tuesday works for you, Steve?
You know what? I'm valuable, any day you want.
Tuesday, Tuesday will work. All right, good, so they will get together Tuesday to work.
10 o'clock?
I'm here.
10 o'clock, you guys?
Good.
10 o'clock works.
Good.
10 o'clock, Tuesday.
All right. I would also like to, since we have Carolyn here, I would like to say that for those of us that are going to be on the interview for the final four, we need to start getting together an idea of the questions we would like to ask, because I'd like to have a solid base of questions from the five of us.
We need a motion to go up, ask Carolyn.
I gave you guys.
She gave them to us?
We've got a ton of them.
They're categorized by quality or behavior, so if you look at them, it should say like analytical ability, cooperation, supervision, so you can just call the key skills you're looking for.
So take one or two of each.
Or some of the areas that are most important, but those are good, their behavioral interview questions are really good.
Now may I ask you guys something? Because we had also, there was a second part of this before the final interview.
Yes.
Okay. So those were going to be phone interviews, right?
Uh huh.
Okay, I'm just not sure I understood what you're saying.
If we only have three or four, then maybe we could just see them all, and get rid of that middle step.
If the, if the final three and four are local, then there shouldn't be a reason, you couldn't be able to see all three or four.
Yeah, there was one file from Idaho that I saw that looked like they were well qualified.
Okay.
And so that would be, that's the one away from the district.
Skype might be an option.
You could also perhaps do a, if you skip the phone interview, if you only have four, you could do a briefer in-person interview, not the whole panel and the whole thing, but just perhaps, you know, with the four of you or whomever, and do your questions, and then invite back your top two of the four, or something like that. So you could do it as a two-step process, it's really nice for the candidate to have a second visit, it also reaffirms the positives, and if you had any kind of negative, like, ooh, what did he mean by that, or what did she, it helps you check in again and say, oh, no, it's fine, or.
Okay, so phone interviews with the final three or four.
Or you could do the in-person.
Yeah, but we're just doing a calling, there's another committee.
It's Dave, Steve, Coach, and Erica for the phone interview part.
That's right, so you guys have to be there.
That's correct. So we will review, we'll have a review after Tuesday to next Friday, and we'll have a report on the final four. And, well, actually, you'll have it done on Tuesday. You haven't, yes. All right, so we're going to have the final four in February, not in March, the NCAA might be upset, but what should be done with the final four by next Thursday, Tuesday, and then that'll be up to the four of you, being Commissioner Walton, Commissioner Hofmeyer, Coach Bill, and Ms. Erica, to phone interview the final, the four that you pick, to give us the final recommendations.
For the shortlist.
For the shortlist. And that can be sent out by email from admin, if you don't mind giving her your suggestions for the final two, and then we'll call a special meeting to discuss how we're going to move forward after that. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Because we need to be done with this. Good, excellent, thank you both for coming and staying, especially Jillian's sick, I hope she feels better.
Yes.
All right. Now back to the Energy Savings Performance Contract.
Yes, tell us more.
Just a quick background, to go through history, we operate and run multiple sensors that control the HVAC system back here by computer. The software program is created and run by, what they call Echo, okay? That program has effectively been shut down, rendering Matt essentially in a position where he has to essentially run down and do manual adjustments to any of the parts and pieces that are now controlled by sensors, so therefore not precise sites at all. So because of the shutdown of the software, that sort of triggered the question of what can we do to get additional replacement software to run this, and we have full ability to adjust and control the sensor stack room, so he doesn't have to be running back and forth. And if I recall correctly, we've contacted three people, one source made an appointment, but didn't show, never showed up.
Okay.
Another source was not interested, if I recall correctly, they did need more attention, did more attention, they were like.
Did they give a reason why?
They just, they said they don't work with pools.
Okay, there you go.
They don't have the technical support for the programs.
Okay, thank you.
So I made contact with a organization, sort of a two-headed organization, one part of the regional manager of Westcor, whose parent company is Desert Air, they are a certified contractor for pools with USA Swimming, and the co-lead on this effectively is, I'm not called Energy Integrity Energy Services Vice President, they are an ESCO contractor, State of Washington certified, energy services contractor, and they team together on project services.
When you're going to get down to these, you start talking about not having to have pools, is that what they're saying, these certified contractors, or are we just saying that they're reputable? What perception?
When, well, that's a title of a, both a designing and a construction source for energy contracting projects.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's why they're called ESCOs, okay? And they apply through RFP to the State of Washington, be qualified.
And so they're certified by those people as being reputable and can be.
Yes.
And that's basically what we're talking about.
Yes. In addition, we got a list of references, is what we're talking about.
Yeah, I'm just worried about, again, it's any quotes, some down in this process.
Okay, good question, good question. So in the course of, we walked through the facility, they identified potential problems, we got some new information that is rather revealing to us as it relates to our heat exchanger, yes, gender, heat exchanger. But aside from that, came away from the meeting with the sense that they knew and understood our system, and were going to be addressing, first and foremost, the issue of controls, but as part of a standard service that they engage with the State of Washington, offered up the Energy Savings Performance Contracting Program. It's a statewide program, the PowerPoint is many pages as you can see, there's a lot of, I think, guarantees built into it, but I think the essence of this is that as a public agency, this is going in our wheelhouse as a public agency to be able to utilize state resources to help us do things like control repairs on control systems and other things, okay? So what started as a control project dealing with controls obviously has expanded, okay? So you need to give a certain level of comfort, and the reason for that is because, you know, there are state dollars that are available that will help through grants, that will help support construction and mechanical system repairs on systems that are outdated, energy hogs and so forth, and much of the cost of that construction can be paid through either by grants and/or energy savings. So that's kind of an umbrella, generally, usually a matching component in there from us. There's some of it, yes.
And the water systems, there are a number of grants, which a lot of people don't apply for, because what happens is even if you've got the grant, the paperwork that went up in justifying the grant, or in limiting the options of what you believe with your establishment are so prohibitive that the grant isn't attractive. Is there any of that type of stuff around this?
If I think I understand you correctly, you're talking about water systems and your own personal experience.
Well, my, I know with them, and that's where the best are. But what I'm wondering is, are there a lot of sort of caveats, reports that have to go in, inspections that come along on the viability of different sort of videosyncratic things with a pool? And you only get the grant if you conform to what these people want?
Good question. Mark Foster, Vice President, is an experienced contractor, ESCO contractor, this stuff is right up his alley, and what he does is apply, self-apply along through with the Energy Enterprise Services State of Washington for those grants, okay? So they work together.
So part of the process?
Part of the process includes grant writing, okay, or requesting for grants, and they assist us through that process. We're the client, he's the vendor, and assists us through the process.
So the contractor helps us apply for the grants?
Along with the state. I don't know exactly what the division of responsibilities are between the two, but the contractor members are certified contractors for the State of Washington, so they're used to, you know, their job is to go through the process of getting us through grant writing, through, you know, the evaluations, and through construction.
Yeah, we'd have to apply for it.
Exactly.
And that's probably where the majority of the work is.
Exactly, exactly. Alternatively, one private entity out there, not a public entity, could say, I'm going to try and apply for a grant, and they're on their own, essentially, okay? So we're going through a process with the state certified contractor that, you know, they do that at this point, they're pretty good.
Okay.
They've got experience with W and F working with, right, similar kind of projects for their pools. Right now, we're at a initial stage, we have obviously already gone through and evaluated initially the facility, and if you look at towards the back of the flow chart, there's a energy services contract flow chart. We're past the first stage of starting where we are introduced to get ESC procurement details and benefits. We're past the selected energy services.
Bill, which page are you looking at? I'm slow picking this stuff up.
Page.
Oh, it looks like the algorithm, got it, got it.
Very end of that, what would be the PowerPoint.
Got it. Got it. Good.
So, we're past Start, we're past Select, effectively. And we're into what we would call the preliminary audit phase. This cost us no money, okay? Now, this is a freebie through the state. And Mark Foster has data and background through the local utility companies that we have helped provide, that gets him early data whereby he can create a preliminary audit and give us basically some general guidelines for moving forward. Is this going to be a viable project? In tandem with that, is a inter-agency agreement that is just behind that flow chart that I copied for you. I just received this the other day and have done a very cursory, if I will, review of the contract. Essentially, what, how it's best described is in the second paragraph where this is an agreement that establishes a vehicle for the Department of Energy Enterprise Services for future project management services. They're the project manager on the project, the state. Project manager oversees Integrity Energy Systems and works with us as the client. And this is an agreement for us as Northwoodby Park and Rec to work with DES for the Energy Services proposal. A lot of details in it, obviously, that we require further discussion, so. I indicated as a contact. And if we move forward, again, this is a freebie phase at this point, and we could stop at any time at this point. We'll call attention to two things. One thing, it's actually, I'm next to last page, bottom of attachment C, where it says, "If the audit fails to produce a project that meets the client agencies," which is us, "are establishing cost effectiveness criteria, then there is no cost to us." So, if we go in through the audit process.
What page is that?
That's, attachment B, bottom of attachment B.
Oh, there's 13 on disputes here. Section 13 is disputes.
Well, this would have to be looked at by Nathan.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just trying to. If it ends, that's one thing. If there's a dispute, which might happen before it ends, there's a dispute board or something around that. And is that a state board that we have to?
I think that's something you'd invest.
So, wherever, not in control there, the board, to tell us what the, what the result would be.
That's typical of any public agency. I know some sort of carrying member or, you know, written process.
It's written into the contract. Before we would sign it, it had to be, already would be designated to be a referee.
So, I think this is a, you know, everything I gather is that this boilerplate stuff for us, just saying, yes, we'll work together with you, the Department of Enterprise Services. And we'll receive an energy audit and have no obligation.
So, what you're saying is that there's little cost passed to the audit?
At this point, yes.
Yeah, I understand. Now, if you're getting to this, it sounds, I know you're gonna say more, then we're gonna get a, once you've got through that state, that audit, then we're gonna get a complete report to deal with, to talk to, to talk about and evaluate before we go to step four.
Absolutely.
And there's no obligation if it just doesn't look practical.
Absolutely. And included in that will be a guaranteed maximum construction cost. That's indicated in the PowerPoint.
And that's guaranteed?
Guaranteed maximum construction cost. Yeah, but will they just stop if they get to that? Will they stop? Well, they'll be under the thumb of the State of Washington, so.
Yeah, I think the allies sound good.
And, you know, there again, we also have referrals from City of Belkirk and others. I guess from the 40,000-foot view, when I might just over, you know, just kind of characterize, we're, we obviously have a 50-year-old facility here, nearly 50 years old.
79.
Same before you, isn't it?
Yeah. And you've heard the war stories of maintenance issues and so forth like that. And we have issues with, again, with our controls to deal with. We have a, a fan out there that's just rattling like an old truck. And, you know, this is an opportunity, I think, to look at a fresh start from a standpoint of the longer-term view for the facility. And it also will be set, and can be set up as a phased project for us, okay? So that we can do bite sizes in this overall project that would, you know, much of which could be paid for by state money and much could be paid for through energy savings as well. We spent $72,000 against last year.
Coach, I think Dave's got, yeah. Great information. Did they, in your discussions with Mr. Foster of Integrity Energy Services out of Issaquah?
Yes.
I'm looking at contractors.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm looking at the contractors page. Anyway, did they indicate as to what kind of timeframe this process usually takes?
Good question. We didn't really talk the details of long-term schedule, but what we know is possibly out there's a May 11th due date for grant applications through the state. So, that may scratch based on input from the state's project manager, my conversation with him. But I think it's smart to look at May 11th as a pro, that's the only schedule piece we know. One thing that there is in here, David, is a, excuse me, is a maximum scheduled time, and I don't remember what page it is like.
It says 2017.
2017, yeah, yeah. Guaranteed that all the work is, December 31st, 2017. And I suspect that has something to do with state funding cycles.
So, the follow-up question to that, because getting money out of the state is not as easy as saying, "Can I have some?" How are we looking as far as, as running our pool and operating our systems between now and the time when not just get, get this rolling, but actually have something in agreement with the contractor to actually do work that is paid for either through state funds, cost savings, or, or other financial vehicles? I mean, how much? Could we do it?
Yes. Yeah, you know what, I could manually run the system probably years. It's, it's not that difficult. Most of it runs automatically.
Don't think about it being old, Greg, you can still work on it.
Exactly.
Well, what's the cost to get the electronics, just to do the upgrade, you know, and get the thing going again?
That's $4,600.
That's the software?
That's just the software required. And then, but then you don't have, they're just savings, you know? And with this, they were also saying upgraded lights. They were also saying our windows at the top are, can be put into this and part of our energy savings. You know, it's pretty much the whole building maintenance. It's not just the, you know, it's not just.
They look at energy efficiency?
Exactly.
I'm just thinking, that's considerable time to get, I mean, we're, we're out a year before minimum to get that going and rolling. Probably, I mean, just realistically.
What we're trying to do is, is we're trying to get it all set up and all ready for our next shutdown. When we shut down, we can then come in and start hitting the major components, getting that knocked down.
At the end of August.
Yes, at the end of August. We might, we might be shut down a little longer than, than a week, week and a half, but, you know, it might be, might run into like two weeks. But with that shutdown period, we'll have a lot of upgrade.
Will this person be able to tell us, you know, pretty accurately whether we're gonna get this, these funds? And did you get ballpark costs on our side?
That's the process and the presentation, and.
I mean, I know we are, our funding is not doing too well. I'm serious, we've, we've got an issue we've got to deal with with our budget, with our amendment, for the team. So, that's all. I don't want to give, I mean, it doesn't hurt to keep this going, but I don't want Matt going out for six months running back and forth and.
We also don't want to spend $4,600 if, if there's an alternative out there that will save us more in the future.
And why would you pay $4,600 for a system that is outdated and is costing, this is so much money to run? Why not be able to upgrade it to a more efficient?
Have, have they given any kind of indication as to the potential savings cost that we would see on our, on our utilities, either from Puget Sound Energy or Cascade Natural Gas?
Well, I think, and understand this is, you know, seat of the pants, not for me, but from experienced individuals who are experts in pools. USA Swimming goes to that, you know, State of Washington.
Nobody's gonna hold them to that specific figure, so.
You know, the feedback was initially that somewhere between 30% to 50% of the budget could be accounted for through state grants. And the remaining portion of that budget could be funded through state low interest, and I think this club publishes 2% to 3% interest, if I recall, offset, to be offset by energy savings. And if you just look at our gas bill alone, I think we spent $72,000 last year in gas alone. And, you know, and with 40-year-old equipment, and, you know, we're looking at, you know, effectively trading that out with heat pump technology that is, you know, Energy Star-type in quality and, you know, very lean on when it comes to energy use. And I think there's, depending what the budget comes back, I think there's, you know, a good case for us to look at, you know, is this something that could be done within, completed maybe within five years from end of, and offset by energy savings over this four or five years.
Do we have the expertise in-house to determine whether it's legal for us to borrow money even to do a good thing? As a public agency, are we caught on that, or is there some level where we?
We're gonna play for grants, especially.
Oh, I'm not worried about playing for grants. I'm worried about the long-term loan and whether, as a public agency, we can get a loan.
That'd be a question that we'd go to Nathan.
I think it would have to, because that's the only thing that so far I think that we have to get, so we don't get ourselves surprised.
So, we'd have to have Nathan look at the energy agency agreement and the viability of bond or?
Absolutely. I think a good follow-up question with, you know, the state project manager is, you know, for groups like us, how have similar groups like us gone through the funding process? You know, we're a test case out there before.
I'm sure there are, but I think I'd really like to know before we actually sign the page.
Absolutely.
So, between now and next month?
We've got a busy agenda, because the other thing that I would like to know in my own framework, and it doesn't have to happen, but this is actually quite exciting to me because it looks like we're actually trying to address the things around here that have to be addressed. So, I really, I applaud you on getting this far. Question of expansion. And you've had ideas about getting a smaller pool that was warm so that we could get the aerobics people in one corner and happy, and the people that swim hard in another corner and happy, which really sounds like a good idea. But it's just one of many options that if we were talking about expansion. And following up on what Dave was saying, we'd like to do this or do the, make this plan such that we could have an expansion as well. An extension, in other words, we're only going one way, we're not doing this. And then saying, "Well, now we're gonna expand the place, so we're gonna have to tear this up and do something else."
And I think that makes a lot of sense, what you're, what you're saying is the term I use is think around the corner. So, if in the case that we were to expand for something, okay, not obligating anything or getting any further than just something else, what kind of provisions could and should be made along the way?
Yeah, I think.
In the mission stages.
And maybe a dreaming meeting of adding on to one of these meetings or something in a couple of months or so before you have, or even a month, just to talk about what may be good alternatives. You know, your idea of a warm pool, the idea of maybe another longer swim length pool or whatever, just so they're on the table, so when the guys come in there, they can say, "These are the types of things we're talking about, more than just, yeah, we could expand," if you know what I mean? If that's alright.
Definitely.
Those are my concerns.
Yeah, that's definitely it. I mean, if we can get the public sold on not only the upgrade for energy, getting some old assets upgraded, but also expanding some areas that are currently not very public-friendly in some areas, maybe, like you say, increase the temperatures on one side and have a good athletic training pool on the other side for needs to keep a cooler temperature. Maybe a fitness room, some things like that, some additional, I mean, just basically sell a vision, get the public excited about it. I think we could give the bond for this, which we're using the grant funds too. And it's a pretty good time to do something.
So, we did book the cart before the horse this time. Because we now found out after, through the discussion of the PowerPoint proposal, but we didn't know this beforehand, that we have an inter-agency agreement that needs to be looked at by Nathan, along with some research into what we can do as far as bond measures. So, if I can get a motion if we want to go forward with this.
We want a motion to go ahead to phase three. Is that the one that we don't have any cost obligation?
Up to the audit. That's correct.
So, and we want to have a motion that also says that we will refer the inter-agency agreement to Nathan.
That's correct.
And ask Nathan about the viability of borrowing money as a special agency.
Yes, sir.
Are those all the pieces?
That'll be it?
Well, I was trying to figure, I haven't got to the point of making a motion, I was trying to figure out the.
It'd be, it'd be a motion to go to the audit, up to the audit part, part of the intake ES PC flow chart. So, we have Nathan look at the inter-agency agreement between DES and Northwoodby Park and Recreation. And go for it.
I'm just gonna interject here. I think what we want to be doing is actually getting to the next step past that. That is the Energy Services Proposal, okay? Which is simply a proposal to us as the client for cost savings and performance guarantees, includes costs, savings, and so it's got all the guaranteed costs in it. So, we, we have a full bundle.
How much does it cost us?
At the next step below that line, which is the.
That would be the detailed planning.
Correct.
But if Nathan doesn't like the inter-agency agreement or doesn't think we can borrow money, then we better stop it before we get to something we have to pay for. That's all.
I'm thinking, I was thinking about the motion, you know, in the end.
The Energy Services Proposal, is that still something prior to cost? Or is that something that we pay for at that, at that point, the proposal?
I'll find this out for sure. So, I'd rather not answer that, but speaking.
So, the step, the step three would be the preliminary audit?
Yes.
And so, what we would then do is have a motion that we proceed to, we proceed on this project to the preliminary audit stage, that we refer the inter-agency agreement to Nathan, along with advice on our power to borrow, to fulfill our obligation. to Nathan along with advice on our power to borrow, to fulfill our obligations underneath this agreement if we enter it. Okay?
Thank you.
So we have a motion to go to the E S P phase of the.
To the preliminary audit phase.
To the preliminary audit phase. Thank you. To have Nathan review the inter-agency agreement and find out whether or not we are eligible to borrow money as a special district.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a second. And do we have further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Coach and Matt for bringing that forward.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Let's go on to unfinished business. Amendment to the bylaws. I have noticed the motion to proposed amendment to the bylaws. If you pass one down to Colin and yourself. And. All right. I was not here for the initial discussion on the proposal amended to the bylaws. The proposed section 4.2, duties of the district director be amended as follows. Then a new section, 2.4.2B be added and that the present 4.2B be amended in renumbered 4.2BA. Section to be read as follows. Section 4.2B, to recommend appointment and dismissal of full-time contracted district employees to the commission for its action. And section 2.4.2BA, to appoint and remove hourly employees of the district as the law policies of the district in circumstances may dictate. Rationale is that present there are only three full-time employees. The commission has passed a resolution requiring full-time appointments be confirmed by the commission. This amendment would extend that policy to permit a second look at the proposed firing or hiring of full-time salary personnel. It would also ensure that the commission remained in control of the long-term budgetary commitments entailed in such decisions. So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a second discussion.
I'll have time to think about it a little more. Executive session, let me ask you this.
Okay.
For personnel issues, were we not told that that is in violation of these rules?
No. You can talk about personnel issues, you can talk about qualifications for a job. You can talk about, Lauderdale hearings have their own rules according to the RCWs. So those are separate. It's run similar to an executive session. So that would be separate as such. What, what is your question?
Well, I guess so. It got to the point where we require a Lauderdale, pronouncing that correctly, a hearing. What, what triggers that?
A Lauderdale hearing is requested by the employee, not by the director or by the commission. It's requested by the employee. So one of the, and it would entail the three full-time, actually it only entails the contract employees. So right now it'd only be the coach. So the contract employee requests a Lauderdale hearing and the purpose of a Lauderdale hearing is to defend the actions. So not to, what you're doing is you're, is you're saying I shouldn't be fired or terminated because of A, B, and C.
And does the board have the power at that point to say yea or nay or hold off or let's wait or, I mean?
The board can make it, and Alan, you can correct me on this. I'd have to look at the RCW specifically, but the Lauderdale hearing, we have to make a suggestion to the director because ultimately our bylaws, we, we can't contradict the bylaws. The bylaws say that the hiring and firing authority is that of the director. So what the Lauderdale hearing does is provide a grievance stage for the employee, the contract employee to the commission to say, hey, you're, you're the boss's boss. I don't think this is fair. This is why.
And they have five, and of course the director.
Ultimately has.
Would, yeah, they have the ultimate decision.
Correct. So, so for the contract employee, they have a recourse and with a lot of.
And this, I'm reading this. I mean, I saw the letter from the staff. I, I think it really only applies, from what I can see, to the contracted person to hourly people. That's the director's decision, which makes sense. I mean, that, you know, the contracted person is a little out of the norm and, you know, can choose whether or not you want to renew their contract to at the end of a, of a period. So I suppose the director would, could make a motion on that as well, a recommendation one way or the other. So I guess I'm just trying to get to, I understand the reason for the, for the notice. Here are the, the adjustment to the employment. I'm not sure that we need to rush this at this point. I think because we have a lot of areas in the employee manual that need to be fixed and I'd love to go through it and just have a, maybe a special session at one point down the road to go through it because there's some old information that needs updating. So anyway, just throwing that out there. I do like the idea that there is some protection for a person. If there's a head buddy contest and somebody's just, they, you know, flips it, you know, the stripes and I win type thing.
Dave?
Go ahead.
You know, looking over the staff's letter that was sent out on, on Tuesday and looking at this again, I know that one of the comments from the staff was that decisions could be made by the director and the commission without receiving input from other, from other staff members who, if this were to trickle down to, to hourly employees, not, where we wouldn't know the full circumstance. And there's due process in, in regards to hiring, firing of, of at-will employees. You know, I, I still think that this does provide some protection, but what it does not have in it is what happens to the employee between meetings of the commission. Does that employee then get, if the director were to seek fit to not have that employee at the building or on the pool deck, does that employee get paid to stay home? Does that employee just not, are they told not, not, not to show up? Could it, could it become some de facto disciplinary action between commissioner meetings? I, I, I do think that there does need to be work and I don't think that there needs to be a rush in this. Helen?
Well, it's just a house thing. I don't understand. I talked to the full staff on that letter because I disagreed with it so much and I couldn't figure out where they were coming from. I sort of got a little bit of information on it, but what we do now and what we had when we were talking, you weren't there for your contract discussion, obviously, but what we did establish was that we would, as a commission, be involved in the appointment of salaried employees, full-time salaried employees. So that was passed here and so we have that on the books already. The other, when it comes to dismissal, that's new. Okay. So then what we're doing is we're adding that. Otherwise, we're not changing a thing. And so we're confirming the decision. We're adding a fact that the, if the director wants to fire somebody, the director talks to the commission with the recommendation. We don't recommend a firing. We don't recommend an appointment. We just listen to the recommendation from the director and we respond so that we're all on side. Unless we see something that's a personality fight and then we have to wait a little bit to see if that's really reasonable or not. So that there's very little change in this process except for that one hearing. Otherwise, it's all in place and it's just tidying it up and putting it in the bylaws. And hourly, to, to appoint and remove hourly employees at the district, the ones that are on that, are absolutely the directors. That's, that's administration. To recommend the appointment and dismissal of full-time contracted, contracted district employees to the commission is just that small set of people that are here full-time, non-salaried, you know. So that's all it is. And so I'm really having a hard time understanding the puzzle, you know. If it comes down to how we want to do it in detail, like process-wise, we don't know that right now. All we know is that if a person walks in and a person is fired, then we don't have to worry about the time between the person being fired and the commission. But there's no problem with the director coming to the commission and saying, this guy has had it. I've got, don't let him in the building. This is why, and have the commission respond. So I, I see them as very small issues.
Are we, are we trying to address contracted employees or salaried employees?
What we're trying to do is just make a slight difference for people that are hired full-time and are not hourly employees. The hourly employees, everything goes exactly as it is now. So it's to, the, the thing that we're looking, the only change is to recommend the appointment and dismissal of full-time contracted district employees to the commission for its action. So we take responsibility. The director is the only person that could recommend hiring and firing.
Then this motion only affects.
It only affects one employee at the moment. It would affect the director if the director was here or if it was a full-time salaried employee other than the coach. That's it.
Well.
Because not all salaried employees are on contract.
Yeah, because Eric is not contracted. Matt's not on contract.
No, that'd be you three potentially.
So then this, this should go back and say full-time salaried district employees to the commission for its action.
Let's change it to salary. I mean, that's part of the problem of one, that you, that you were concerned about. But if we just said full-time salaried employees, well, that solves the problem.
Making careers that build themselves.
Actually, I prefer to keep it contracted.
One thing I want to bring up is that everybody keeps talking like, except for the commission more than once, about this could be a protection clause for the employees. But if you listen to the employees, they don't see it as a protection clause. What they see it is, is that possible? We, we've had it before. And I know when you've approached them and asked them about this.
Who do they work for?
You could have a commission who thinks that one person, I mean, because I've heard it mentioned before that, you know, we ought to be able to go to employees. I have no authority on my own. I am one person, 20% of a body. I, I don't have the right to go up to an employee and question them on their responsibilities, their duties or whatever they do. I don't. I am, I, when I walk in this building, I am just a, I am just a person. Now, when I'm in here and I'm with you guys, in this, in this form, this body, then I actually am part of a body that can make decisions. When you listen to them, what they're concerned is, and they've outlined it very well actually, is, is us possibly overstepping our boundaries. And then you have a, a commissioner who comes in and then you have an employee who, who maybe thinks about, hey, if I just get on the good side of the commissioners, just a good thought. We have very different opinions, but that's fine.
I was going to say, you know, I, I, I go back to other special districts where they try to enthrall their, the head of their organization that value, whether it's the director, a fire chief or whatever for special districts. And there's nothing more frustrating than having the board try and run your operations for you. And while I understand the intent, I can see that being compromised. We talked about Lauderdale hearings, you know, it gives the employee a grievance process for the contracted employee mentioned. The rest are at-will employees for the State of Washington, you know. And, and my concern, not that it really matters, but my concern is that, you know, it can be construed that the board wants to have control of the hiring, firing of the contracted or salaried employees, as mentioned. So, so I can definitely see, see that, you know, dipping the toe in operations, where does it stop? You know? So I, I see it. I do see that.
When we, when we debated Bill's contract, we were unanimous, as I remember, in the importance of vetting those full-time, whatever contracted, salaried, contracted, whatever you want to call it, to make sure that you know that it's a person that's on an hourly contract. And we all agreed to that. So what's the difference between that and this?
Actually, time. Time.
Time of what?
Time of having a chance to, to consider things and to see how things have went and to see how, to see exactly what happened. And not all of us were on the board at that time. We really just felt like Sean, myself, and you. And, and because I think Kirk and Dave weren't part of that, so. Well, personally, Alan, I, I'll be honest. I, since you asked the question, I'm not pleased with the way things have went down over the past several months. Not a secret there, is it? And I think that, you know, there is some merit to us, the dysfunctionality of this, this board right now. But at the same time, I really believe in going forward. And I think that there's an opportunity to go forward. What I don't think is, is an opportunity to go forward is when we, we make the, the people who we've trusted to keep this thing going in a positive direction right now. We really need to listen to them right now. I really truly believe that. And I'm not trying to be indifferent with you. I know that you made a comment about will we disagree, but that's okay. It's okay to disagree. I'm just expressing my opinion and I, and I really think that we, we need to keep this thing going in a positive direction and, and that's my opinion.
I see this as moving in a positive direction. Unless I see this avoiding the problems that we dealt with in the political backlash of Neil. I think that we would have a chance to have a number of people involved and responsible for a firing decision rather than one person essentially being symbolically focused on. I think it has to be done before we get a new director because otherwise it'll be seen as something which is undercutting or having, not having confidence in the new director. And we don't want that. We want the person to come in and have a stable base. So what we're doing is we're just consolidating our actions, if you go back to the last full-time salaried contract, and making a chance for joint responsibility for dismissals, which in fact may reverberate through the political arena. And so in fact, this adds stability. It doesn't make it worse. It's not a matter of distrust of anybody. And no, we have a responsibility, the staff have responsibility for their jobs and we're separate. And that's our job, you know. And as we're going in and talking to the staff, I'll do it anytime because I want to hear what they say or I want to say what I'm saying so they can understand it. But I don't direct the staff. And I think that that's something which, as commissioners, we are required to do. So that's basically my response.
Well, you, you brought up the former head coach, Neil Allen, you brought it up. And you would remember, right? The board actually supported that. So that is, that is a, that's kind of a mischaracterization.
No, it's not. It's not at all.
The board actually supported that decision and, and he knew that.
I know they did.
Okay.
But I know that in the, back next two years, that the tack was on Bill, wasn't on the board.
Again, now.
And I, I called the question, also, to discuss it, because I think we.
One of the things, if a director wants to go and dismiss somebody, a contracted, and I, I really want to point out that this needs to be contracted, not salaried, not salaried, not exempt people, just contracted only. And it says it though in black and white, just only contracted, not hourly or salaried employees. My question would be, does the director call, request a special meeting for this essentially to come before us and it's open to the public?
Yep. It's absolutely important. I mean, it's a person's life.
Okay.
Any further comments? All in favor of the proposed amendment to the bylaws as written? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All against?
Wait.
All right, I have to now read by name, because it is not unanimous. I'll start with Alan McDougall.
Aye.
Dave Walton.
Aye.
Kirk Huffer.
Aye.
Steve Hoffmeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Election of 2014 officers.
I nominate Mr. David Walton as the chair.
Nomination of Dave Walton as the chair.
You get stuck unless you find a way.
Do I nominate somebody else?
You may.
I nominate Alan McDougall as chair.
I'm going to also nominate Alan.
Okay. So we have a nomination of, yeah, we have a nomination of Alan McDougall as chair and Dave Walton. We have vice chair and secretary also.
I nominate the secretary.
Secretary, thank you.
Now you know where we passed all your minutes.
So I have a nomination for vice chair.
I would nominate Steve Hoffmeyer as vice chair.
All right.
I'll make Sean as chair.
No, you cannot.
You don't want Sean to resign.
Well, we have two nominations for chair, and we can make this simple. Dave, would you like to accept or decline?
I would decline.
You would decline?
I would decline purely on the fact that I'm brand-new to this.
That you're new to this, sorry.
And respectfully, I think that there's a very steep learning curve, but I'm still trying to grasp the first run.
So I need a motion then to accept Alan McDougall as the new chair, Steve Hoffmeyer as the vice chair, and Kirk Huffer as the secretary.
I make motion that we nominate Alan McDougall as chair, Steve Hoffmeyer as vice chair, and Kirk Huffer as secretary.
Nominate or appoint?
I, to appoint. Alan McDougall as chair, Steve Hoffmeyer as vice chair, and Kirk Huffer as secretary.
I have a motion to appoint Alan as chair, Steve as vice chair, and Kirk as secretary. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Oh, aye.
Nope.
All against?
I'll do it, but I'm not...
I need, I need an official for or against?
It's three to one.
Okay.
They all voted for it.
So you want me to, I have to read the role for this then?
No, you don't have to read.
Okay, thank you. So a motion is approved unanimously. Alan is the new chair, Steve will be the vice chair, and Kirk will be the secretary as of next month.
We need a break, except for that. Sean?
Yes.
I want to thank you for surviving a hell of a year.
Thank you.
You've done a wonderful job.
Thank you very much, Alan. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next on our business is the thanks. We need to thank, and I don't know how we thank Tom for all he's done.
I'm sure he does.
I'm sure he does have a nice speech. But it would be nice if we could officially thank Tom with a letter from the board.
I have a question about that.
Yes, sir.
If the computer Tom donated for the maintenance to operate the software isn't utilized for that purpose, then does that return back to him?
It would, it would need to be unless he changes his donation.
Changes his donation.
So we need to ask him about that next time we see him. Matt, can you run into him and ask him?
And it might be a little bit too early to ask that. I mean, specifically because at this point, we don't know what kind of system we're going to need to operate. Kind of give him a brief of what's going on and ask him what he would suggest in this sense, for kind of him. Because we don't want to, we don't want to be operating or taking that donation to false pretenses. So. Kind of huge thing. Give him a lot of... So... Yes. So what I will do in my last month as chair is I will draft a formal letter of appreciation thanks to both Carolyn and Tom for what they've done. Another month. So, all right? So, yes, sir? You were going to say something?
We made the motion to look into, I think we're okay with it.
Yeah.
We're going to look into price of getting bonds. We're going to have Nathan Mann check this out, and we're going to go check the inter-agency agreement. There's three things, whatever they were. What's the process of that? Is that just the chair go in and kind of get that rolling? Because what I'm thinking is, as soon as we have some answers there, we can kind of know whether we're going to go with some...
We just got to get in touch with Nathan.
Right.
Give him a copy of the agreement, the draft agreement which you've given us.
Right.
And get advice.
And actually, one of us can send, and it ought to be you, send an email to Nathan as the chair, because only the chair is supposed to talk to Nathan, so.
Why don't you talk to Nathan, and we're going to do the two letters, and give me a copy so I'll see what it is.
Okay. So I'll send, good point. I'll send an email to Nathan, and also let him know that you'll be the chair starting next month.
That would be, that would work.
All right.
Do you have that electronically, do you have the electronic version of the inter-agency agreement?
We got it by email.
You did, that's what I thought.
It didn't, yeah, I didn't...
I didn't get a chance.
I have a book in my email.
It's, it was until I read it, I came here and...
I've got to learn to carry a cell phone.
And so you're okay with operating this manually? You'll feel a little uncomfortable?
Yes.
That's my concern, I just don't... And do you need to be here on weekends, I mean, to be able to check up on this thing?
I had an assistant.
Okay, all right, so.
Marco Carrera? No. Marco's not my assistant. Stephanie's my assistant.
Stephanie's my assistant.
Marco is my, not yet.
Okay.
Just tell you.
We forgot to do that, but it's not on here, so I keep it up. It was in the staff report. All right. Letter of agreement to, I'm going to skip over to letter of agreement to Babe Ruth. Do you have that?
I have it in my office.
Do you have it in your office? Basically, it's a letter of agreement with, between the district and the Babe Ruth baseball folks for the...
For the baseball side.
It's the same, same letter of agreement we've had in the past, correct? And it's continuation of that same...
Different dates.
Different dates. Do you have that?
It's in my office.
Could I see it, please? The reason it's become up is because we normally have the director sign this. So we need to decide who has to sign this in lieu of the director.
You're doing it for the next, when you're doing it today, with Nathan, and then I'll start next month. The chair can do that.
It even has my name on it.
Hey, we got to party.
Well, you don't have that ready.
You asked her to do that, thanks. All right. So whereas the Webby Island Interagreement with Northwood Beach Recreation District, we have priority use for both fields, and OHBD will provide a practice and game schedule so that other users may have the opportunity. And they've always provided that game schedule, correct?
Yes, I don't have it at this time, but they will. Mr. Young was in...
Do we decide if we're going to do that? Or just a little bit?
Why don't we, why don't we do that? Let's do that, and let's make a motion. That way we cover our bases.
It's like a motion to renew the...
Letter of agreement?
The letter of agreement with the Babe Ruth Oak Harbor...
Oak Harbor Baseball Association.
Oak Harbor Baseball Association for the 2014 season.
So there's a motion, a, to renew the letter of agreement with the Oak Harbor Baseball Association and Northwood Beach Parks Recreation District for the 2014 season. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
They maintain the field, correct?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, and I have customer service down here. What was that about, Steve?
It was the auditor had sent out a form, like a, what was it called, you guys? Hey, how did you, yeah, how did we do it in the audit? It was, yeah. And they kind of wanted, they'd sent it to Bill Walker, and he, well, who knows what it was. So who fills that out?
Who fills out the customer service from the state auditor's office for our last audit?
Yes.
I would suggest that the staff do.
Okay.
So do we have, so you guys signed with Nicole, so she...
I think it's a multiple thing, I mean, more than one.
You can all consult, so, you know, you guys know, we don't...
Kind of agree to make a motion for that.
There we go. That's taken care of. All right. All right. I'm going to hit all the easy ones here, so we can get those out of the way.
Did we do the parenting concern?
No, I was going to go volunteer opportunities with the Oak Harbor, Webby Island Marathon next.
Oh, sorry. Bill Patterson and I have been in discussions with Tamara Sykes, who is the director for the, the director with the city of Oak Harbor for the Webby Island Marathon, and the all these names mixed up. There is a volunteer opportunity at the expo in the information booth where the district could, at that point, wearing the official volunteer T-shirt, be able to pass out information about the district and its programs. I believe that in doing so, we should seek patron volunteers, perhaps swim team parents, to assist there. There might also be opportunity for the older swim team people, if they have the time available to them, to help out there as well at the expo on a Saturday. There's another opportunity on the full marathon course to man a water station, which would be for a several-hour block on the side of the road. The materials and supplies are provided by the Webby Island Marathon. The volunteers could put up their own banner and advertising as to who they are, which they cannot do at the expo, but they can do that on the side of the road. I don't necessarily know if I'm looking for the commissioners to say, yeah, that's a good idea, we should go forward with, with doing that. We're at the time, we're, we're at that time where we either need to make a decision, yes, we can provide the volunteers, or no, we can't. What date is the... April, April. April. April something.
We're working in conjunction with another entity that puts this marathon on.
The city of Oak Harbor is the...
The city does.
Is the owner of the marathon.
Now, I know about it, but Bellingham does something similar to this, and they can, the swim team up there can raise quite a bit of money.
Yeah, this is not a money-making opportunity for the district. It looks like it's April 12th, yes. The, with the, with the expo and the other activities happen on the 12th, which should be the Saturday.
So we could actually do both days.
However it is, looks like the Marlin Madness Swim Meet on...
Does NWA participate in that one?
It's at May 12th.
May 12th.
April 12th.
Yeah. Two weeks later, we have our Hall of Captivins meet, which may involve four hundred starters.
Sure.
So I'm a little cautious about volunteer fatigue, if you will.
Yeah.
Yeah, you want your volunteers to pay, that's for sure. Well, could you just put it out there?
Put out a volunteer opportunity?
I guess, do I go back to Tamara Sykes and say, yes, we want to do one or both, or do one?
What do you need to know?
I need to know whether or not we can, I guess, get, whether or not the district will facilitate people either through volunteers, whether we'll actively pursue volunteers to, I don't think that this is something we want to pay men hours for. No.
How many, how many volunteers would you need?
Do you remember what she said about the expo? Probably two to three for the expo. Now, the water table takes about five to six. You take quite, it takes about... That is, that is, it's not exceeding 10, but it's, 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 well, about half dozen, probably eight or nine, and you will use a water station. And it's, it's, the only problem with the water station is, again, we might be able to put a banner that says Northwood Beach Park and Recreation District, or NWA, and you know, wear our T-shirts and whatnot. We're really only going to get, we're really only going to get seen by the runners, who most of which don't care. Come from off-island. But it does put us out there.
We could throw it out there in the summer.
When do you have to have an answer next time?
Yeah, I think it's...
Oh, probably last week. Last week. I mean, I can, I can definitely talk, talk to Tamara, and if that is something that we can put out there at, at the team meeting on, on Saturday. Now, I know that in the past, we've talked about volunteer hours for the, for the team. It has not been a policy that, that we require volunteer hours. It is something where I think it's, would be critically beneficial for the image of the district to have some of the families that are receiving public funds to offset the cost of the program, you know, out there, giving back. I, for one, would be happy to be there on, on Saturday. We don't participate with stuff like that and stuff, so I have to, but it's just...
I, for one, am already working, so. I will be in the EOC, so.
Check the camera.
Thank you.
I'd get, I should have hired a running agent.
While we can put it out there and see if we get any volunteers, okay.
The benefit of working at the expo is we could, along with the official duties of the marathon and directing people, pass out our flyer and our, you know, here's what our running program is and our support program.
I'll go back to saying that Oak Harbor's making money. I don't know why they can't hire some folks to, you know, do some fundraising with them, share a little, I mean, if they want volunteers.
Well, they actually do. They have, they, they contract with the soccer team from somewhere in Poohville to do something. And why couldn't they, because Oak Harbor School District didn't want anything to do with it several years back.
That's right.
And so they just, they have this longstanding contract with this youth organization down in Poohville, and they continue to, to go back. Is there area for us to, to break in as a fundraising activity, perhaps in the future, but not this year?
What weekend is the April pools, the 26th or 27th?
I couldn't remember.
Oh, I'm sorry. The April pools?
Yes.
We are looking at the...
Nineteen.
Nineteen, yes. All right, thank you.
I think it was sometime in April, I'm sure.
Further con, further discussion with the volunteer opportunities? No? We're going to take a...
It's a great idea, by the way.
Yeah, just like you did. Should we take a quick five-minute recess?
Motion to take five minutes.
If I can call a recess, yes. That's one of those, one of those things I can do. Alan, we've got a further motion and a second thing, a five-minute break. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we will call the meeting back to order after our five-minute recess. We're still on new business, making great headway. We'll go ahead and start with security and access to district spaces by former employees. Kirk, you asked this to be placed on the... Kirk, you asked this to be placed on the agenda for new business, so.
Yeah. Got an email from somebody that said they had seen a former director coming to our spaces here unescorted, from what I heard. So I thought that was concerning because they said that they had gone into the office here, collected a couple of things, apparently, and then walked out around the back and kind of made a loop of it. I, he is a former employee and should not have access to spaces unescorted unless he has a, you know, something personal that he's left behind, or, and I understand that, that's no problem, but just to allow somebody that is no longer an employee.
Do we confirm this?
I have confirmation through witnesses.
Okay.
Several witnesses. Just, just putting it out there, I, I don't know the other side, so apparently somebody had, if it is true, somebody had to let me know.
Well, the problem, here's the issue, and I'll tell you what happened. I'm going to nip this in the bud real quick. And not that it's definitive, but I'll nip this in the bud real quick. We looked into it. And I'll tell you this much. First, their, their security cameras in the building. Just so the board remembers, we do have security cameras. And we looked on the two days that, actually, the day that was reported to us in the email by Lynn, since she threw the director out there, I'll throw the person that wrote it out there, okay? Let's just throw all the cards on the table, shall we? Yeah, it's, it's a valid concern. By all means, by all means. And it was for a Sunday. And so, so, thank you for speaking out of China. So it was a Sunday, and since I still have the floor, we also sent emails back and forth from Commissioner Hofmeyer to Lynn, and she, she mentioned, as she just stated, that it was also, it could have been Monday. So what we did is we checked the tapes for three days, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, or?
It was the eighth, the ninth, and the tenth.
Eighth, the ninth, that's, what, what days were those days? Dave, can you confirm those days for me?
It equals a Saturday, Sunday, and Monday.
Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. And Matt, what did you see when you looked at Saturday and Sunday and Monday on the security cameras?
Mr. Walker did not enter the building by any camera that we have in our system on any of those days.
All right.
Those were the cameras on. Yes, there's two on the pool deck. There is one pointing at the front door. There is one pointing back to the back, actually, two towards the back doors. So, and that would catch any motion in, in these spaces.
Okay. So they like heard these cameras on and off. How do they work? Are they continuous?
They're continuous, and they're.
So you have like fast forward through them?
Yes, pretty much.
All right. Well, anyway, I would just like to put it out there that, I mean, to me, it's, I would not allow somebody to do that. Are you, Bill?
No. And I was going to say, I, I also did, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you a shot here in a second, Steve. I also did actually call Bill and asked him, hey, Bill, I got somebody saying you were in, you know? And, and he said, no, I have not been back in there. The only time I've been back in there since I was, I, I left was for the state audit report, where we all saw it. I, the, the email did talk about keys and security codes also, which I confirmed. The keys, he handed on Friday evening to Erica and Nicole. He handed them to two people to ensure that he didn't just hand them to one person because he knew somebody would question it. So he made sure there were two people there to protect both of them, basically, is what it was. And that's the way you two understood it also. And that I actually asked of them, I didn't ask of anybody else. And then Matt changed the security codes the next morning, correct?
Yes.
So the security codes have been changed?
Yes.
The key is back in your two hands. Granted, there is always the possibility that somebody had gone and gotten the key made, however, the security code had was changed the following day. So those things were addressed from the email.
That was immediately upon his resigning, correct?
Friday, yes.
Yes. To his last day, I changed everything, for sure.
Okay. Steve?
You know, I'll tell you, the big, the bigger issue here is this, we have a decision as a board to make. We really do. If, if in fact this is accurate, if it is trespassing happened and documents were stolen, the law has come broken, I call the chief of police. Because if Bill Walker came in, not as the director, and he came in and he went in and removed documents out of this office without permission from his partner, he has broken the law. Chief of police, Chief Green, said, if, if we want to report this, we've got it, we as a board, we charge Sean to go in and report this, and he would investigate it. That would be foolish of us because the other option is this, this is untrue. It's very dishonest. You know, I, when I got this, the same email that you guys, if you read the first paragraph, it describes it in the first person, like she saw it. Then I emailed this individual, and I said, you stated in your email, this past weekend, the former NWPRD director entered the director's office, removed some documents, exited the office on the day, through the office door, behind the cashier, and through the fishbowl. Very descriptive of what happened, isn't it? If you don't mind me asking, what day and time did this supposedly happen? Now, it goes from very descriptive to very vague. Actually, I was sound exactly right about the timing. My understanding is he came in very early Monday morning before 7:00 a.m. So then what I did is I called Erin. I said, Erin, you're the head cashier. Who was working Monday morning? Miley was working Monday morning. What time did she get there? 5:30. Would she have been there before, all the way through 7:00? Yes. Does she know who Bill Walker is? Yes. She called Miley home. Miley says, no, Bill Walker didn't come in. So then I sent this individual an email back. If you don't mind me asking, who said that they saw him go into the office area? Was it an employee? Are you sure that it was Monday? I got no answer back. This was on Tuesday. So Thursday, I came to the meeting with the senior staff, and I asked Matt beforehand to look at the camera for Sunday and Monday morning. The very interesting piece here is, Sunday morning before 7:00 a.m., Coach Bill entered the building. It's on the tape. Did somebody accidentally see him and accidentally confuse the two and relate to this individual? That's a possibility. I don't know. But Bill, like he told me, he did come in on Sunday morning before 7:00 because he was going to discontinue. Bill Walker did not come in Sunday morning. Bill Walker did not come in Monday morning. This is untrue. And since this is untrue, you have to doubt everything, every credibility this individual has that they've said up to this point has to be questioned. Everything they say from this point on has to be questioned because this, you can't say it's an accident because accidents aren't accusing someone of breaking the law. We as a body have to make a decision right now, really. Do we trust this individual, or do we trust what we know to be true, that he was not on that camera? Because we, I'll tell you, if we think that it's honest, then we have to turn it over to the police. We really do. We have no choice because the law would have been broken. But I would just say this, and then I'll drop it. There's been a lot of, a lot of things that this individual has been, has brought up over the past 16 months. Over 50 public records requests. The attacks have continued, and people have listened to this individual. Like she's this respected person, but I'm telling you this right now, a respectable person doesn't make up a story about someone. And if you've listened to this person and it's biased your decisions in any way, I would caution you, she's a little bit of wisdom going forward because everything this person says now should be considered with a grain of salt and questioned.
What does your board want to do?
Do we have a motion?
What do you, we need to. You've given a lot of statements, and you argued very nicely. The only problem is you're a single commissioner that's done all of this, and I thought you didn't do anything when you came into the building. I was the way as of, you appointed me to be there, and I didn't yet. That's what I was doing.
Are we making a motion, or are we going to say that? Go ahead, Dave.
What's this motion supposed to say? That we as, as individuals, or we as a body can't, can't listen for, can't listen to a member of the public who pays taxes to this district? I, you, you, you said we as a body need to make a decision.
That if this is the truth, and we believe this, we have to go to the police. We don't have a choice there.
I think the allegations at the moment have definitely been questioned, and we don't have to take any more action on that. I think that.
And what we've decided is.
No, let me, let me finish. I was on a subcommittee that was taking a look at allegations of illegality against Bill Walker. And I interviewed a lot of people, and Lynn had a lot of, if you want, public records requests in that area that were absolutely valid. On interview, they were confirmed time and again. We didn't see Bill as breaking any laws, but they were inappropriate managerial behaviors, which were pointed out. So it's not a record of take one and damn the person because we can give you 20 or 30 there, which were right, you know? I mean, I'm not going to make any, I'm not going to vote for anything, let's just damn it.
Okay, so as, as, as the chair, the security and access to the district spaces by former employees has been answered, is that correct?
I think it's everybody's on the same page with, I understand that. I mean, I just want to make sure that there wasn't, just.
I, for one, appreciate the, the work that was done by, by staff and, and by, by the chair and Mr. Hofmeyer to verify that this did not actually happen. If it had happened, it would have been disturbed again, and Steve's correct, we would be obliged to, to report it.
Yeah, I, I don't know why this would be reported and not be a truth. That does bother me. And again, I've heard who the, the people that are witnesses are, and they may be biased in some cases, but at the same time, you know, they're, they're people that swim, so I, and I, again, I don't know why they would make something up like that, but that's, that's my problem. Or that was, reason was kind of a big red flag to me. So anyway, yeah, it's.
I don't disagree that it was a red flag, obviously, if you took it seriously. I took it seriously because it's, it's legitimate. But I think we, to the best of our limited investigative tools available, we, we looked into it, and it seemed not to have happened. As Steve said, it could have been a case of mistaken identity, which does happen. But I, I think we've, the staff has taken the proper security measures, and we do have the security cameras in place to ensure that things are safe for the patrons and the taxpayers, and that's really it's not going to be.
Yeah, and I don't even mind if a former employee would have come and need to pick up a personal item, as long as they were escorted, you know, if someone worked here, that's important. Can we let Lynn chime in herself?
I just want to be going in. I'm too concerned, I'm pretty careful to say, I understand, and I looked at my email. I didn't say I saw, but it wasn't clear, and I apologize for that, and I'm glad I was wrong. Not a big deal. My other question, there's not just, I assume the big, obviously, he's the security coach, but all the passwords, all the LNI, the access, all of those things, have those all been changed? That was the other piece of my question. There's just, has somebody attended that?
There is not a password for LNI, so to speak.
Because I know it was an issue for Vicki, to get, but Vicki had access to them, and she did not have access.
Actually, Nicole's had, Nicole has access to those.
Yeah, I'm just making sure those got changed. I know there's probably a thousand of them. I'm not asking for anybody to do a rundown and just stand, but to make sure all those.
I got a confirmation from the admin person at CS. Okay. All right. NWA parenting concerns. We received a letter from, is this?
Oh, that's anonymous.
You know, it's, it received, thank you. See the letter from anonymous?
It's a group.
Yes, no. It's not a punk rock group from Russia.
No.
I'm looking for it. Did you have it up? Yes, right here. But yours is going to be easier to read than mine. That brought up some concerns.
I wouldn't go into detail on, but it's really scheduling concerns and following up and with communication. Our parent is very frustrated with it, and they're, you know, they're a person that's been with the team. And I, I don't want to dig at it, Bill, but this person is very frustrated and very, I mean, I think they're on borderline to leave. So, and again, it speaks of some meat management, knowing how to use scheduling, getting the word out to parents, and not changing things last minute or signing them up for things they don't want to do, or, or report before letting them know things, and that, and so. I just want you to know that we received this letter, and I don't know what to tell you.
Any one of the concerns, some of the concerns of the parenthood, I'm sorry, Dave. Was, was, there's frustration about swimmers, you know, of course, our numbers dropping, which, you know, we saw happen. One of the things they're concerned about now is coach to swimmer ratio. Like Steve, like he already said, some of the, some of the meat entries and how it was managed and, and the communication type, type thing, and concern about maybe a booster club coming in and business plan. So, you know, obviously, like Kirk said, this is, this is more of kind of like a, hey, you know, let you know, we're, we're getting this from a parent, this, and they want you to know, want us to know that they're concerned about some of these things. So maybe, maybe a proactive response from you would be a good thing.
Yeah, maybe the parent meeting to say, you know, I know the commissioner's got a letter, and please feel free to talk to me or voice your concerns directly. I don't know what to tell you and how to handle it, but.
Yeah.
Just want to.
Secretary, would you know that?
Cool. All right, no other on that. Public comments, second time around. Discussion, final comments from the commissioners. Mr. McGugl.
Thank you, Dan. Wonderful job this last year.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Dave?
No, again, thank you for, I'm sitting next to you. And I don't envy Kirk's position either, because, you know, it's sometimes hard enough for me to try and understand what's being said in the moment, but going back and trying to not just understand, but, but remember the context of.
Well, I know what it was like, what was nice with having a director was that they could go through, do a rough run of the notes given to me, and then I could kind of go through and confirm and go off that, oftentimes cut based with what they gave me. And it's nice to have two people looking at something before I submit it and it gets to, you know, or I submit it late, and you guys don't have enough time really to look it over either. And there was a lot to look over. So even, I did get it to you, I think, Monday or Tuesday. Monday, I think we got Monday. But I would, it's something we need to, to be thinking about as a board. We, our financial condition is in very good shape right now. I, I did. I, I did bring some stuff, you know, I just went through, and, and I don't know if Nicole, if you want to make some copies, this is what I took for the last, since 2007 on our, just making some simple graphs that are pretty easy to see and figure out and understand. They're not scientific, but they're pretty close. If you would want to make some copies of these real quick, and just hand them out, people will take a look at, and kind of think, okay, this is where we are, this is where we're going, what do we need to do? It'd be a good idea.
While Nicole's copying that, can I finish my turn? Oh, I'm sorry. So, I, I just wanted to say, I, I understand that a lot of times a squeaky wheel gets the grease, and the things I hear from members of the public, honestly, that are negative far outweigh the ones that are positive, only because most people who are satisfied don't go out of their way to say, hey, look, they're doing a great job, hey, look, they're satisfied. When I do, they're very complimentary of, of, of the staff here. You guys are doing an exceptional job, even in the absence of a director. And I wouldn't say that the director, if, if they were here, would be getting the praise, because you guys still do an exceptional job. Thank you.
I read a quote today, and I seen it, and I wanted to share it with the senior staff earlier. I just want to, it really fits us where we're at, it really kind of resounds in my, inside of me. We cannot go back and rewrite our history, but we can at any present point redirect our focus and write a new ending. And I look forward this year to work with you guys just in front of you. And as we get our focus and move forward, because there's good things happening here, and we all, we all want good things, and for the residents of Oncarton. And it's just, I just want to share that with you.
You know, a lot of people kind of look at us and think we're dysfunctional, but, you know, some of the best businesses are ones that people do not get along very well, and they're always arguing in butt heads, you know? I don't know, but it allows, you know, you sharpen each other, really. So, that's what we do with them.
All right, I'll, I'll wrap this up. I want to first thank the staff for all your support, it's, it's been great. I, I want to thank Alan for taking the mantle, because it's, it's, it's going to be good not to be the commissioner, the chair.
It sounds like you're doing it for others.
So, it sounds like you convinced me to do it until our next meeting, so thank you. It has not been easy, almost two years, but I, I think that we have a great team to go forward with, and that's what we need to keep focusing on. It sounds like we're all focused on going forward. It was almost two years, yes. So, it was way too long. One year and eight months. One year and eight months, yes, it was. That being said, our, our next scheduled meeting is for Thursday, March 20th, 2014, at 7:00 p.m.
We're moving that to 27.
We have a motion to move the next scheduled meeting to March 27th, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. Do I have a second?
March 27th.
Yes, March, March 27th.
You're in the soup meet on the 20th.
Oh.
We may have lied to you.
No, I was in the right month.
You were in the right month. It was, yeah, you were, March 27th, yes.
Actually, I wasn't, but the date's the same.
You're good.
Covering in March, that's.
And you're good. You're good. All right, so we have a motion to move next, next month, thank you very much, Nicole. Next month, meeting to Thursday, March 27th, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. And further discussion?
Give me that date again.
March 27th.
And that is the end of, obviously, the end of March?
Yes, sir.
One, one Thursday past?
That's right. And for, for a point of discussion, the 20th is A G S. And I, I know that there will be three of us that won't be here, because we have children that will be swimming, so.
Good luck to your kids.
Thank you very much, I think all three of us appreciate that. So. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I need one final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. I have a second. Do I have any discussion? I didn't think so. We have a motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
There will be special meetings on the director, though.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thursday, oh, Tuesday, too.
Yes. Here's my letter of agreement.